You guys don't mind, I'm gonna try to socially distance myself so I can move my mask so everyone can hear me. I want to thank y'all for being here tonight as we talk about our final budget or proposed budget for the 2021 school year. This presentation's gonna look a whole lot like it has in the past couple of years where we're comparing the budget we're about to propose tonight to the budget that we're wrapping up. Also, just add some little grace to tonight. I spent a heck of a day here in the district and my mind hasn't been really focused on budget today, it's been focused on many other things. So, if you bear with me as I get through this, hopefully my mind will kick into budget mode as we go into this presentation. So, like I said, the way we've been handling this the last couple of years is we compare the budget we're proposing tonight to the budget that we're wrapping up. So, you can see over here, I opened my little arrow, didn't make it that far. The column there, 2019-2020 estimated revenue, so the budget we passed last year, we were estimating that we'd receive 3.4 million local revenue, 2.54 in state, for a total of 5.85, and that's what we had in our approved budget last year for 2019-20. The next column there says 2020 realized revenue, so this is the revenue we've actually received up to this point, and that was as of Wednesday, I believe, was the last time I checked up the numbers as I was completing this presentation. So, you can see local, we received 3.6, just over 3.6. From the state, we received 2.2, and for our total of 5.9. So, we're well in the black when compared to our realized revenue, what we've actually received and what we estimated. That being said, go to 2021 projected revenue. We're back off of it a little bit, even though our certified values have actually gone up for attendance zone by just over 24 million. That is about 6% increase, but HB3 doesn't allow us to increase anymore with our tax rate more than 2.5%. So, we back off a little bit, that's when you see that number go down a little bit. Plus, there's this little thing going around, I don't know if you guys have heard about the pandemic, COVID-19, it's affecting everybody's pocketbooks. So, we are staying very conservative on our local revenue. The same with state, too, we back off a bit a little bit for a total revenue of 5.6. So, you know, what is that? Anyway, I don't have that specific number written down, the difference there, but you can see it's gone down a little bit, trying to be conservative. We don't know what the future looks like due to the pandemic. We're still trying to navigate House Bill 3 and compress tax rate. And the last thing is, as we started this budget, we didn't know what student enrollment would look like. So, these estimations here for this projected budget is based off an ADA of 480 students. And just so you know, as of today, we had 534 enrolled. So, if we are at 480 for attendance rate, that's less than 90% attendance rate, and that's gonna be bad news if we're at that end. So, I feel pretty comfortable with our projected revenues. I thought this was interesting, though, I shared this slide last year, so it's just how our revenue is broken down with how much comes from local, how much comes from state. And the interesting thing is, last year, local was 58% and state was 42% in the same diagram. And the thing is, House Bill 3 was supposed to take more out of local, and we're supposed to receive more state and less local, and for some reason here, it's changed by 2% the other way. So, diving straight into expenditures, what you're gonna see again, this is what we're projecting for the 2021 school year as compared to the budget we're wrapping up, we're spoken up in function, because that's how we pass our budget, it's by function. So, you can see, we've increased a little bit in 11, which is instruction. We've increased just a few dollars in 12, and we've actually gone down to 13. And a lot of this, guys, just has to do with change in salaries, benefits, and so forth, TRS and those percentages. No major changes in those functions. Moving on to 2030, 31, 33, and 36, you can see we've gone up a little bit, school leadership, right around $5,000. That was those principal raises we gave our two wonderful principals, so that's the difference there that you're seeing. Guidance went down a little bit, that's just adjusting that maybe we had too much in 31 last year, and benefits, TRS, so we've made that adjustment to be more accurate. Health services, the same thing, went down, was at $43. That's an adjustment, and then you see extracurricular went up a little bit, and that has to do, if you remember, in our budget workshops, we talked about adding $12,000 for officials to cover those costs, because it was a pretty close budgeted item for 2020, and we know the expense of officials was going up. We also changed the way we're doing training supplies. If you remember, we had one budget for $1,500, and every sport was to pull out of that. We've done away with that line item, and we've put a little bit of money into each sport. And so, when we changed that as an increase, what we're spending on training supplies by $1,300. We elected to add $3,000 in teacher, coach, travel in 36, so that we can get our coaches to their coaching school, their professional development. We hadn't done that the last couple of years. And then $2,000 in miscellaneous under 36, just because we didn't know what we're gonna face with COVID. School leadership, that's kind of how the central administration office should see us going up a little bit. That would include the pay raise you guys raised, which we gave to me, and it would include Ms. Baca and Ms. Tim's step rates that they receive. Student transportation's changed a little bit, the difference you see there, if you remember, last year, we budgeted around $80,000 to get a truck and a Suburban, and this year, we've budgeted around $100,000 for a SPAD bus. So, that's about that $20,000 change you see there, just though we're taking away one at the other. Planting maintenance, you can see that's gone up a little bit. Again, we talked about putting money in that function so that we can start preparing the football stadium parking lot that's gonna be a significant expense for our district. 52, remember, last year, unfortunately, we had to go back and take care of two years of SRO salaries, so that's why you see it's half this next year for speakers, and then we'll be this year, because we only had one payment for SRO. Technology's gone up by $3,000, and that's the one we specifically talked about in our budget workshop. That's our student management system, Texas, through the service center. And again, we did not budget the correct amount this past year for that, so that's why we added $3,000 there. 71 debt services, I don't know why I put this in there, I guess, just to show us there. This slide will be there next year unless something changes, but this was, 71 is what we paid, made our bus payments out of two years ago. So, that's when you see a zero for 2020, we didn't have a bus payment, we don't have a bus payment issue this year. These are our last two functions, 93, what that is, is the payment we made to Brown County Special Ed Co-op. You can see it's gone up $14,000, and guys, that's just simply because we have that many more special ed students we're serving now due to child fire. You should see that number start leveling off, as we shouldn't have that big an increase in identified special ed kids in the future. And then, 99 is the payment we made to our Brown County appraisal district, and that payment's gone down a little bit as well, so we're very fortunate about that. So, just to summarize our expenditures there, you can see 2020, we projected 5.5 million. Realized as of the minimum this week, it was just over 5.1. So, you can see the bottom number down there is, we're around $300,000 in the black when it comes to what we budgeted and what we spent. So, we wiped our pennies again, and we're conservative for our spending. And you can see all those add functions that we just went through, added up to be 5.6. So, a little bit of increase there, about $83,000, but if you remember, we're giving step raises to teachers, and that's about $52,000 right there. Just to show how it all breaks down in our total budget within those functions, 57, obviously is instruction, that's where we should be spending most of our money anyway, so we're doing the right thing there. The 12%, you see over in the purple, kind of the top left, that's maintenance, and again, that's a big item for us, because that's about $630,000 in our budget. That leads us to the tax rate that would support this budget. You can see 2020 there to 2021. The MNO tax rate for 2021 is, right now, what we're gonna be proposing is 2.9439. What House Bill 3 has done with their tax compression and our amount of growth, it was actually compressed down to, what's that, it would be 8939 is what it's compressed to, what we talked about, voting to use our five gold pennies, and that would put us back at the 94% tax rate. INS tax rate, you can see it's dropping again a little bit each year, I think it's doing that, because the farther we get into the bond, the less that payment is each year, so you see that. And so, our total tax rate that we're gonna be proposing this year for 2021 is just right around $112, so almost a 4% decrease. And if you look at it, from 18, 19 to this, we've decreased in the last two years by almost 11 cents. So, I think we're headed in the right direction with our tax rate and the money we're pretty in fund balance and our spending and so forth. So, that's what I have tonight. Any questions or comments, I'll do my best to answer what you have. Yes, sir.
So, you said that 5.3 was realized, and what do we expect anymore from the state?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Corner, I had that in my notes, and I meant to share that. So, actually, in our summary of finance, the state is, and this is what's difficult to figure out right now, if what's in the summary of finance includes our, yes, or brand, or does not, that's what we're determining, but I'm anticipating about another $170,000 in more revenue.
So, that means total will be about $500,000 if...
If, yeah, you know this, for everybody else in the room, when we're talking budget, it's all if, it's an estimate. So, I think so.
How much is it, $1.5?
That's a good question.
1.8?
1.8? Thank you for saying that, I had my notes to share, I forgot about it.
Do we have bills that we have still to pay out for 2020?
I imagine we still have a few bills to pay. It may be around 170, I don't know. Ms. Tim, would you have, off the top of your head, would you have an idea, bills left out for 2020, what that may be?
Not much.
We have to accrue adjustments.
Well, we have, right, how the salary goes in, the tax, and stuff like that, the auditor board.
And any adjustments that they might want to make?
Right, after we send it to the auditor, are you gonna adjust the thing by changing? That's why I gave you a number prior to the auditor saying, this is what you put in the fund balance.
So, if they don't, if they don't talk anything, we're looking a little over to the, we might have some outstanding things that, you know, it'd be 2.3 plus minus something.
Yes, sir, it'd be around that, and what we've been talking about as a team of eight is possibly starting to designate some of that fund balance to prepare for capital increments. So, you know, we start looking at gym boards or tracks or whatever, but we designate some of that fund balance, so it's not all sitting there as undesignated, but that's kind of the plan moving forward. Good questions.
You writing down this as a development, why is it so much money?
Those are not doubt reported right to me. Sorry.
What's the school leadership?
School leadership, what, 41?
$180,000, 14947.
Tell me what function you're looking at, Mr. England.
This sheet right here.
Uh, question, 23.
23?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You have it?
Oh. There it is. That is principals, that is their salaries, that is anything that falls under principal supplies and so forth, anything like that. I addressed that when we went through the presentation, and the $5,000 difference was simply the raises they received for next year. So, their supply lines and all that stuff is still the same.
Well, I said, is this worth a demo, where each, each person sells?
Well, does that probably be about a 40-page report? And even the one I look at doesn't have everybody's name next to it, it just says salary.
So, is that due on there too, the leadership?
No, sir. That would come in that one with Ms. Baca and Ms. Tim, salaries, travel, even board travels in that function, board supplies, administrative office supplies.
But is it for legal fees?
Legal fees, yeah, that's a big one in there. Legal fees is in there. Sure is, thank you. Contract and services, like when we do our board trainings and stuff like that. Anything else?
I have another question, I don't want to, I don't want to be the one who, but no one else is gonna ask. So, in the past couple of budget meetings, you've talked about having to come to that AEA and having to figure out your income from the state. You have a work sheet, you put in your ADA, you fill in the budgets of funding with the levels that each kid gets, and in your last conversation, you put them all in the lowest one, right, so that we're conservative.
I believe that we have to.
So, my question is, have we ever considered, and it's really brave, but that's conservative, I appreciate it, have we ever considered on the budget side, trying to dial that in as close as possible to what we're gonna figure out, show the excess in the budget, so that this board can make decisions about how it's gonna be spent in the budget instead of people exchanging the fund balance at the end?
Well, I believe we did that with the budget we're passing here. We showed the excess, and that's when we determined to purchase special ed advice, we determined to set money, put money in the budget to repair the parking lot. So, we did that this time. I think the reason we haven't done that the last two years, Mr. Corner, is because we were in dire straits to get money and fund balance. So, I think moving forward, we're gonna be doing that, and I think we did that to agree, to agree with this budget we're proposing tonight.
Is also conservative for the House Bill 3, 22? No, I understand, what I'm saying is, we have a enrollment of 535. Last year, we had an enrollment of 505, 4 weeks.
503 and 503, yes.
That budget is at 40, and all of those kids are at the lowest level of funding from the state. Now, most of them probably are supposed to be there, but there are some that we know are going to be changed. What I'm saying is, you know, use last year's numbers, put the kids where they're supposed to be, or the best estimate of the numbers, and we would end up showing on this, I don't know, 200,000, 300,000 more than we're looking at. And then, this group can say, we got a limited fund balance, because we all know what next year is, is where I want the state, or we're gonna fund this, or whatever, we're accessible, or, you know, whatever, this is the group that's responsible for us.
Right, and I think that's what they've done a good job of over the last three years, exactly what you're talking about. Again, you have to remember, we started this budget early on, we get kids with the pandemic, we have no idea, we're only gonna, if we're gonna have 400 kids, 480, 523, we have no idea. I talked to a superintendent today, they passed their budget, I don't know, maybe Monday night, and he's looking at his ADA, and he's missing 700 kids. So, I mean, we are very fortunate, we're very blessed in this district, that our community believes in our district, they're still with us, they didn't go to homeschool, they're here still, and that's a blessing, but we wouldn't have known that when we started this budget. I think you're gonna see, we start drilling down penny to penny as we move forward, but again, the last two years, dire straits, we need money and fund balance. This year, we're dealing with COVID, what is House Bill 3 actually gonna do for us? And so, it's another year of being conservative. That's why this year, when you look at what we're passing, there's $5,000 excess, because we saw what we had, and this group did a great job of saying, we need to spend that money, and let's spend it in these ways.
Also, too, Scott, for the last two years, special education, what was the main?
The child.
Well, we're about to find a project, and that is, every year, we give this year with a higher spend number than we started with, and we obviously have to fix the weighted ABA quarters. So, it's been that for two years, and I think it should level out.
It should level out, we should see a pretty consistent number over the next couple of years.
Last call for questions. Any questions or comments?
The question was right now, they got a budget, or they're gonna do those again? Or we got a budget, nothing about that.
I've got a question.
I've got a question, just out of curiosity, is administration, you mentioned staff running out, do they level out by the teacher?
They do, yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
So, another, the principals deserve the grades, are you gonna give the teacher the grades either way?
Yes, sir, that's in this budget.
Why is it?
It's their step rates.
Just 1%?
Something like, well, no, it's bigger than that, because we had to adjust our pay scale last year to meet the new minimum. And so, some of those steps...
Is it 1200, 1500?
I don't think so, well, that might be the average, but there's one step that's several thousand dollars. So, and again, Mr. England, we wanna be conservative right now with raises, because what's gonna happen with funding in the future? Because again, the sky's falling financially, that's what we're being told. So, we give a big raise this year, and then we don't get the funding in the future, you can't take money, you can't decrease salaries, so in that case, what you can do is lay teachers off. Well, I'm hoping the way, since we've been conservative, we're able to give our teachers a raise once we see how things are going, when other districts may have to be laying teachers off.
So, your goal is not to rip anybody next year?
Absolutely.
Goal is last month, no, not last month.
Goal is not to rip anyone, reduction enforced. The goal is actually the opposite, maybe the only district in the state of Texas can give a raise when everybody else is out and laying people off. That'd be pretty awesome.
Any more questions?
If you have a question, entertain, well, come out, we'll jump to a turn, motion to adjournment, we're going to. Motion, possibility of adjournment, second by, and, and the higher your hand, motion carries now, oh, they need to be, maybe, we need to talk last before. And we'll start with a resolution, public forum, we have two people signed up, speaking, Ms. England, where'd you go? You can go first.
Well, I'm a teacher, so first of all, I'm praying for y'all. It's crazy.
No.
I don't know, let's go help. No, I'm a teacher, I'm praying for y'all, this is a crazy time, I understand that, but my approach, if I wanted you to kind of educate for 30 years. I have been working with school of duty since March in Ryan, and I know that it's been a crazy day today, everything's gonna be changing, because of tomorrow, on next week, but I've been training, I've been in the process of training 25 teachers, I work with a whole group of instructional coaches that I've trained hundreds of people on school of duty all the time. So, I know you have a lot of things to consider, and you're trying to figure out what's gonna happen next week, but I wanted to just say a few things, I don't know if you're aware of them, I don't know if your teachers are telling you things. A lot of teachers I work with are kind of afraid to tell their bosses, I'm not saying I only have that environment, but they're kind of afraid to be that one person on the staff that they can help. So, they'll tell me, and they won't tell their supervisor, and that's just struggling with school of duty. So, not bad, that's a good platform, it just takes some time to get used to it. So, with my staff that come on next week by themselves and supervise a lot of teachers in Ryan, well, we're gonna be trying to learn from school on school of duty, and we'll have to just be, do a couple of things that we need to consider that might help all of our kids. One of them is, first of all, when we came into our school, which is fifth and sixth grade, about 700 kids, we started calling the kids about how they're doing by having them back in school. Every single kid, when they're asked, what do you think about going back online, either like, oh, oh, you know, doing that, or they're just silent, because that's if you're gonna just punch them in the butt. So, online schooling, it's just, I'm just gonna say it right now, it's not effective, it's not realistic, it is not like we're in a classroom, and you don't want a TPTD, you have a computer. So, it's already caused any one of my children who called me today at lunchtime to go all into depression, because he knows he can't sell on a mark. So, the kids are, I don't say you're gonna, you need, counseling is involved, but you need to be proactive about how you're gonna help these kids, because they're scared of death, and it makes them miserable, and especially those high school kids that are thinking about college and all these things, they're just, I'm afraid they're gonna lose some. So, that's kind of why I kind of speak, was just, I really wanna be passionate about that, and share that. And the next thing is, videos on school of duty, they're very difficult to download. So, when a teacher posts a video and says, for example, like last spring, we had some teachers who are doing great work, they're wonderful teachers, a lot of our teachers last year, but they'll post a video that can be anywhere, I'll give you mine from three minutes to 58 minutes for our kids to watch, whatever subject you just pick on your head, to watch, and then you can, and the buttons on, sometimes even with the support of the bragging hot spot, that was handed out, thank you, I actually needed it in, sometimes those kids weren't able to watch those videos at all, like a 5 minute video is gonna hour for somebody to watch. And then, it might take, you have 58 in a video for kids, like that's just not gonna work. The other thing is, when the kids are picking up, for example, they're picking up laptops and stuff tomorrow, I think that's the plan, I know it's just all very new, kids can try to pick it up, because they're scared of the video. So, I hope that's okay, the number's in the hit home, so I'm kind of just going out there and hoping that's the plan. Teachers, a lot of times, will think in school of duty that they have properly downloaded a document or a video, because they logged in through their own Google, and they can see. But I let them go and look through the document, or sometimes you go open the document, and you see what, access denied, I don't know why, just randomly why, you are on that version of Google list, and you can't open it. So, when the teacher in school of duty, she puts everything in there for her kids to do, they're logged in, so they're equipped one to make sure that they are, it's there, because they have access to it. Don't be told for the kids, the kids will be logged in, they can't see it all, they can't see the video, they can't see whatever. A lot of kids, they either think, you know, oh, forget it, I don't remember this, they do the assignment, they run into some problems. So, just really being close and monitoring how you do with your staff, we're gonna start with some... So, just really being close and monitoring how you do with your staff, just gonna show some of this. They're not sure how to do it all, either. Zoom and Google Weeks, I don't know which one you're using, they're all really good, but they freeze, they freeze a lot. So, when your kids in the rural areas try to get on a Google Week so they can see their classmates, and talk, and hear their teacher discuss now, instead of just looking at a picture now, they can run into some big problems. So, I'm not saying don't do it, I'm just saying like, your teachers really need to be aware that some of those kids are on, not because they don't care about, because they really can't connect. I'm real concerned about my kids checking out that, I'm very concerned about it. And I know you are too, but you said something just a minute ago that I thought was really good, so I'll try to, I know that you were talking. But you said our community believes in our district and the state in bold. This is a scary time, because I know, I'm not sure about anybody else in here, but I was kind of on the fence about what are we doing in Iowa. And I wouldn't have been the first person to say, I'm gonna take my kids with me to Ryan. But right before school started, we're like, do we need to take our kids with us to Ryan? What's happening out there? I don't think Ryan's a better district, I don't think Ryan has a better class, I just, I don't think Ryan has a better education, but Ryan is a school. And I didn't think I could take school. So, I'm praying for it, I'm always hard, I'm not trying to be negative, I'm just saying like, if this is, if our community believes in our district, this is a crucial time, a real crucial time. One thing I need to consider with school of duty is, right now, that we got this small town, so we can talk. I've already heard from the kids that are on school of duty now, friends of our kids, assignments are due at three thirty. That's not possible. All the districts that I know of, and I work with a lot, forty-one districts, through our regional national service, thirty-one districts. I've worked with thirty-one districts at all times. Nobody's having assignments due by three thirty, because his parents don't come home, and you have to help someone with their assignment. So, I'm asking you, would you please consider, at least for next week, or maybe for the duration, assignments being due by eleven fifty-nine PM? It just gives a parent's time to get home, and a little Joey's, you know, time to write down, and you can help him start to figure out how to do the assignment, or upload it. A lot of us didn't take pictures, or a math assignment, and he didn't turn it in, but he drove right away, or, oh, just print it out and then turn it in. We don't all have printers, and I don't know if you try often to see code and string with their ID. So, I don't know how to happen. Again, some of those methods don't work very easily. The other thing is, just when they return, what's the plan for, I don't know if you addressed this here or not, but like, what's the plan to make things a little different? Like, how are you gonna social distance, or how are you, what are you gonna require? And this is the part I really didn't want to say, but I'm going to say it for the very first. It's not wise to have staff and students walking around with no masks on, waiting on social distance. And if you didn't see Facebook, I didn't. We've got a lot of staff members on our campuses who are right up close and personal with kids, doing pictures and having, and what are on happening to you? I'm not thinking that. Come on, I can grab you and take a picture with you, no masks on, you no mask on, that's why I don't do that. So, as much as our kids are kind of doing some goofy stuff, our goal is to make sure that they're doing it right. And I know that we have some that don't have to wear masks, some kids for whatever reason, but if it's a mask issue, help what you're gonna do to take care of that, or if it's a social distance issue, and if you're not sure, you know, kind of give us an overall view of like, what's gonna, what's gonna make it safer when they come back? They're playing this tomorrow, but what's gonna, what's gonna be the difference if they come back? But I think I'm, so, I don't know if you're present or...
No.
I was wondering.
And really, that's not the word that I would think for your principals, but the speech you just made, you didn't really start with your principals and your superintendent, that's true, and our board acting, can we take action on something if they brought you into it? There's nothing that's requiring board action, if you say that's all administrative.
So, the board doesn't have any policy or plan in place, or what's gonna happen next as far as...
That's an operational issue.
And how do we get...
Your time is up. And it's not an interruption, although.
Really?
Okay, Josh, you personally have a question.
Wow.
I'm curious to know how we're gonna get back to school, what we're gonna do to make sure, the day we get back, what day is that, September ninth, or whatever it's gonna be? The day we get back, we have another positive COVID test, or we're gonna shut down again? I'm curious how that's gonna work, and if it's, if we think it's gonna be effective. Because, in my opinion, this thing is not going in. So, I mean, I get emails, you know, we got another positive COVID test, I get them that way. And I think this should be my decision, whether or not my kids go to school, I don't think this should be anybody in here that decides to shut down school, because there's three positive tests. I'm gonna say that, but I feel I know a lot of people that I believe in. But when they go back to school, we're gonna do this again. I mean, there's no way, we're gonna continue getting, so we either shut school down for the rest of the year, or we figure out a way, or we have a way through it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. I have another three considerations to give to you, Mr. England.
I think Mr. Radicich came in, he had a question, I didn't receive any details, but he asked me something, I think he came in, he wants to ask again. Yeah, just looking through the, we lost here, some of them stuck out to me, but the main one, I was looking through the school, you know, all of a sudden, we're running dumpster signs, I don't know if that was something new, or what happened there. The, I think you're talking about the signs that we posted, letting the community know the dumpsters are for school use only, and we have to do that, we had some community members that were taking to put their personal trash in dumpsters, going up the dumpster.
Do you have any other questions?
I'm sorry.
Any questions? Motion by the Secretary of State, Scott. Before the session, I'll tell you what I mean. Motion to adjourn. I'm recording, I can't, I'm just ready for it.
Mr. Juice, can you invite your speakers, please?
Okay. Really not too bad, since the last time we met. But I did want to update you all, we're gonna be doing the backpack program again this year. That's where we supply some families groceries for the weekend, their kids taken home. Ms. Evans is the coordinator on that, Emily Evans, she does a great job every year, keeping confidential, making sure kids hit what they need when they go home for the weekend. Also, September twenty-eighth, we are gonna have elementary parent conference day, that's one of those staff building days, elementary's a parent conference day. So, still we're handling logistics and how that's gonna happen safely, but that's it.
Thank you.
Well, despite the outcome of the day, I do want to say, we have a great community. Our students have been, they're alive and footed. They fight from school every day, they're here, they enjoy life, they're happy, eager, we have great kids. We have amazing teachers that are, the world's been turned upside down, they've been put through the wringer left and right, and they're still here for our kids, doing whatever they can do. And we have the best staff we could possibly have, and the best board. So, I mean, despite everything, it's great to be a goal. So, first and foremost, I just want to say that. The second thing is, right now, we're transitioning a lot of our online stuff, so we're gonna get, put, to use all the training that we've been doing for our teachers, so I'm really looking forward to how they're gonna have the opportunity to really show those skills and the things that they've been doing lately, all the professional development they're doing, so we're very proud of that. And some of the things that we have adjusted today, we already had, is we have extended our review date time from three thirty to five. So, that's one of the things that I did, went out to. Ready to be pulled off, we're gonna get through all this, we're very proud of our students, go back.
Repeat that again?
Okay. Ready to move mobile?
No. From three thirty to what?
Five thirty.
Line five thirty.
That's what most of the schools have been seeing, the time period.
Senator Andrew Ford has said a few things for this meeting. Just want to let you know that the district has partnered with the Texas Impact Network. They reached out to us, and they are funded through grant money, but they will be working with us to make sure we have our plan put together for the teacher incentive allotment, which was, which is the plan, pay teachers, raises based on performance and such. Again, we're cohort Ds, it's down the line, but I want to let you know that this company reached out to us, and has offered their services to make sure we dot all our i's and calls all our t's as we start to develop that plan. This company is working with several districts in Region Six, Anderson, and we're still shooting two of the other districts, so we're excited to have that assistance in developing that plan. And that's if the teachers incentive allotment doesn't go away in the next biennial, in the next legislative session. The last thing I have here is, it kind of addresses a lot of things that have been said tonight. And I'll just share that, as your superintendent, I want your kids in the building as well. This is where I want them, and that's why elementary's continuing to operate the way, the way they are, because they need to be in the classrooms. We have four positive cases at the secondary. And what we're doing, you know, Monday, we identified three, received three positive cases. And there is a specific direct line to T E A, it's actually called the back home, that superintendents can call. And I called, and the first thing they told me was, well, you need to confer with your county health official. There's not one in Brownsville County, if y'all didn't know. There's not a Brownsville County Health Department. So, I shared that with Scott from T E A. He goes, then you need to talk to DISHs, which is Texas Department of State Health Services. So, we have a specific person there, there, in that, with that organization, that's our, supposed to be our representative. And we call and tell them what our situation is, and they help us walk through it. And something we learned today, when we let them know we had our fourth positive case, they said, you're doing the right thing, because if you get to five, then you're considered to have an outbreak. First, you never heard of five being considered an outbreak. Guys, our struggle is keeping your kids safe and healthy, and educating them. And it's a tough decision, guys, and we're not just sitting here, you know, flipping points and making those decisions. We want them in the classroom. At the same time, I want to be able to look each one of you in the face and say, your child didn't get sick at school. And that's what we're trying to figure out. Some people want some answers today, tonight, about what's gonna look different when they come back. That's what we're gonna spend the next several days figuring out, and communicating with you guys. I think our kids, the secondary kids, for the most part, as much as you can expect a teenage kid to follow your expectations and rules, they've done a good job of wearing masks. And every time I'm in the hallway, it's our secondary teachers have their mask on. But, Mr. Elliott, you said it also, this is gonna happen, it's because it's a virus, and it's gonna spread.
It will be, it will be an outbreak, what happens then?
I don't know, they didn't have it, when we asked, what's that mean, they didn't have an answer.
Well, the early call feeling is that my citizens, we should be making a...
Well, they didn't shut us down, I did. I take full responsibility for that, because we need to make sure four doesn't turn into six, or eight tomorrow. And then, Monday, twelve, and we've got to take into the consideration, keep your kids healthy. That's the number one priority, if they're not healthy, they're not gonna learn, regardless of whether they're at home or on a computer. So, I just share that, we're working with Texas Department of State Health Services, trying to make these decisions. We're making them out of concern for your child's health and safety, and as a district, as the leader of this district, we want them in class as much as you do.
I'm giving a hundred dollar award to children, I just think there's, I said it to him, he's coming. So, I will get out, and he keeps mad all day, but...
I know, my personal opinion on it is, as a, as a country, as a state, we're gonna have to accept this is a virus, and people are gonna get it for a good long with their lives.
It's not, in this room, you couldn't get locked in any close line, or even when I just, the problem is, they're gonna get it when it wins.
The problem is, the state of Texas, the T E A, is not allowing us to take that approach right now, when it comes to education. That's just what it boils down to.
I have a question, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I wonder why when I came in here, there wasn't a six foot above, there were six feet, in a line, on here and out, which way you're supposed to go out? Just like, our cafeteria, you got everything lined out, there's a dock for every kid to stand on, there's a dock on every one of these tables, where you can sit six feet away, there ain't nothing here. There's nothing here, there's not some place to see whatsoever, except for the adults in here. Why is it there's something for the kids to follow, moving back on the line, like, we got it? Why do you come in?
That's an interesting question, Mr. England, because the campus we're concerned about right now has all that cafeteria. It sure does. It doesn't appear our age has been doing a great job during elementary lunch, spacing those kids out, and making sure they stay socially distanced, when they get in line, the teachers are helping. I'm gonna leave it at that, the campus we're concerned about has all those things you're talking about.
But the U I L state, that you gotta wear a mask in the sidelines?
I don't have all the U I L schools memorized, Mr. England, I'm sure you do. But if that's the case, I guarantee your coaches will have a mask. So, that's all I have.
I did have to have my mask. We got a email this week from you that cited that our kid, the child, had tested positive, and that we're gonna find out they were in close contact, and that would be send home to do virtual learning for ten to fourteen days. And then, I found parents all over the telling that that changed, that now that it's gonna be tested, if it gets tested negative, then they can come back to school. So, I was wondering, could you explain like, maybe why that changed, or whatever?
It changed in that situation, because of the timeline from the last time those kids who were positive were at school, and in close contact with these kids. And for DISHs, and for the doctors those kids went to, they tested negative, the doctor said, you are, you know, I think you're safe to go back to school. Will that happen in the future, tell me, if there is someone that's identified as in close contact, they'll go home for fourteen days, regardless of whether they're tested or not?
Yeah, because it doesn't make sense that people can come back and be tested, because you don't have time to prove that they're on.
Well, that's what I'm saying, in that case, DISH said it's okay with those more than five days from the time of exposure. And so, they were saying with the negative tests, and doctor releasing them, you should be good.
So, you've had to see that, have you had a student that was sent home, allowed to come back with positive messages, but then later tested positive?
That is correct.
I get the rest of that, I did know what you were saying, and these kids went to various places. Well, when they did their quick test, they were told two things, their quick test, that's miserable, and you would feel a lot confirmed results. And our message directly from the house where they're at high school, who told us that they had come home, said, you didn't make a test, you didn't return. So, I know all the parents that I talked to, we all called the center immediately, said, okay, what do we do? We were told in the email, if your kid negative, because I think five days, they had to feed it, they can come back to school, they can come back to school.
And then it's... That's correct, but that would not be the procedure. If they're identified as in close contact, they'll be sent home for fourteen days, regardless of whether they're tested. That's all I have for the agenda.
I have another final consideration, the twenty nineteen twenty twenty.
Believe you, I have those in front of you, they were emailed yesterday as well, with the, and actually, I'm gonna use the same thing, they emailed to you with the explanations. There's not any questions, I just recommend the board approve the veteran amendment for twenty nineteen twenty twenty, as presented.
Could you tell me the total, is it, what is the total, the total of inputs? What is, is it forty? Is it forty thousand, what is the total amount of it? Well, in the cafeteria, it's out. And then, like you explained with the email, in five hundred nine, is twenty thousand is not actually, like, actually from your fund balance? It's literally just, I have posted that the revenue that we posted, versus the expenditure, was just twenty thousand dollars. dollars. Would that answer your question?
Here, but how is it? I don't know. I don't understand what you're saying. I'm just studying that. You mean, you may not have a total somewhere at the bottom, total? What, I guess total?
One of them's moving twice through a bunch. It's moving from one bunch to another, it's actually, it's moving twice, it's the same amount. Thirty, over thirty thousand. Question, I have a discussion. Question, those by your right hand. Question period stand by. I have another number six, consideration document, budget, July 21st.
Uh, this is the budget we talked about as opposed budget. Uh, last board meeting, there's change, it's what was presented tonight, so just ask that the board approve the 2020, 2021 proposed budget. That's for today.
Question by Scott, second floor, David, I have a discussion, this is a discussion on the budget for 2020, 2021.
I do have something I want to say. It shows that in excess anticipated would be five thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars. So, and I understand that it could be different, I'm just hoping that there's not a huge difference again, because I've had people calling me and saying, we're either under spending or over taxing. And I understand that we wanted the money back in the budget and I understand that we spent the money this year to buy us and do some things this time here. But I'm just saying, it, it continues to be a big significant number between what we adopted and what we actually get. And then we can start thinking about what we're getting.
There's a report on TDA, and while our, our fund balance looks relatively healthy to everybody, it's looking at the ability to report, we see that it are on the side of the fund balance without people to a, to a district or state. Only you look at total fund balance, but you put a very sign, they don't have a sign of, of thirty, uh, of thirty weeks compared to the state. So I don't feel that putting this back, you have building committee or the facilities committee is going to have to do it intentionally with some, uh, preparation, have to improve it, so we know we have that couple of things sitting in front of their expenses. I have a problem with putting money back. If you try to drill down, then you have a negative, like you say, you're gonna pass five million, it's positive, it ends up being negative, then the names there are probably there too. So, I, I think you do a pretty good job of that.
It just, it was just intentional. Uh, yeah, that's true, that we're beginning to improve, it needs to, to improve the fund balance, I agree with that, but I just think we need a clearer picture of how close we are to what we're gonna get back. And, and adopting a five thousand eight hundred difference, then we come back with five hundred thousand dollars difference, then there's the need.
I don't think we'll see five hundred. Any other discussion? Those by your right hand. Question period stand by. I have number seven, consideration, resolution document, back year.
You can see, um, behind the cover page there, uh, we're proposing because an MNO tax rate of point nine four three nine, uh, debt services or INS tax rate of point one eight one two three, or a total tax rate of one point one two five one three. And this is with the district using their five gold pennies on top of the new compressed tax rate due to HB three. Uh, if there is a motion, there's specific language, uh, that was included each board members. This is just ask that the board approve our, uh, tax rate for 2020. That's for today.
Whoever made the motion, you can clarify if there's specific language that you have there. I guess everybody has.
Yes, sir. I see it under every board member. I move the property tax rate to be increased by adoption of a tax rate of one, one, two, five, one, three, zero, which is effectively zero point four one percent increase in the tax rate. And also, this is a INS tax rate of zero point one eight one two three, and an MNO tax rate of zero point nine four three nine zero for 2020. Should be a total tax rate of one point one two five, one, three, zero, four, one, two.
Do you want to do seven, or do you want to? Okay.
Saying about standing, open for discussion. Open discussion. Open discussion by your right hand. Question period stand by. I'm more than I consider it to be useful, I'd like to speak.
Uh, uh, what are you, what are you? Yes, sir.
Uh, presentation, DA, you can approve the question.
Yes, sir. This, this is the same interlocal agreement we had last year with Madison Bill, we need to place a student in DAEP. So this change, uh, it's the same, uh, resolution, uh, the same cost, which will be a hundred dollars a day per student. I just ask for a group, uh, this interlocal agreement with Madison Bill, C S, C I S D, or D N U P S I.
Motion by Dan. Second floor, move. Open for discussion, any discussion on the agreement? Discussion, both by your right hand. Question period stand by. That will go on to number nine.
Yes, sir. But to, um, I have the current handbook, and the first one, the first page is just a change in, um, the price of student tickets for football games. That was a discussion amongst our football DDC, district executive committee, that was voted on, that all tickets would be five dollars. So we're just asking for a group to change that in our handbook. And the second one, uh, is in addition, uh, under exemptions, and that students may not exempt if they start testing by exam in the first semester. So if they're in a force that has an E O C, we're saying that that they might exempt from that exam in the first semester. They did the second, but not the first. That, that first semester, they will give us a bit freedom where they stand with their E O C. So ask the board to approve those, uh, edits to our current student handbook.
Question by Dan. Second by Dan. Open for discussion. Discussion by your right hand. Question period stand by. Back to GM. Consideration for the service, business, technical.
The only change, this is our, we follow the drug off the thumbs and checks our campuses, ours, park, actual parking lot, and this contract, the same company we've been using now for, since I've been here. The only ish, not issues, the only change is a ten dollar increase, uh, in each visit, but I ask the board to approve our contract with our interquest, uh, detection payments for the 2021 school year.
Question by Dan. Second by Dan. Open by your right hand. Question period stand by. I have another one.
Hi, there's.
Question there. I have one.
I'll move.
I have another one. Now, I'll say, uh, question period stand by.